Call your name, Bill, please.
Thank you.
Debbie, can you go ahead and call the roll?
I think they're muted, aren't they?
It works.
No, they're not.
Here. I can't, I can't hear you, Debbie. I can't hear Debbie at all.
Yeah, I think Debbie's on mute. It's, it sounds like she's picking up in the background of something else.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There you go.
All right, sorry about that. Okay, Bonkcrux?
Here.
Fennedaddy?
Yeah.
Bo Waden?
Present.
La Fever?
Present.
Pete?
Here.
Bruci?
Virtually here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Okay, form present.
Okay, hello, everybody, and thank you for being here again for one of these. We thought we were going to be able to pull off a regular meeting, but we were recommended by some people that we don't break the rules yet. And you know me, I'm not a rule breaker. Scott can attest to that. So, the first thing we're going to do is, everybody got the email sent out by Scott over the weekend, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to let Karen start and discuss some of the things from that email for her hat, for her, then we're going to let Stephen talk, and then we're going to let Scott finish up with the MERS and any other issues that they've discussed over the last week or so that we have not been able to meet. So Karen, if you want to go ahead and get started?
Yep, that would be great. Okay, so I won't read, I mean, if you, do you want me to read the tick list, or have, has everybody read it?
I've read it.
Just read it off again.
I don't care.
Will you, Karen?
I read it.
Okay, I sure will. So, so we started off using 251,958 in fund balance. So we've reduced some expenses. The AccuMed fees for ambulance billing by $10,000, attorney fees by $25,575, an additional $25,000 reduction in consulting fees, and then cancellation of the fireworks, and then some miscellaneous corrections for FICA longevity overtime, just a few other little things. And then, at the request of council, we increased custodial supplies. We increased, sorry, by $700. We increased special events for the City Beautiful by $1,000. And in turn, we reduced miscellaneous events for the Civic Commission by $1,000. We adjusted the police permanent wages by $20,000. We have increased city aesthetics by $10,000. And the fire truck financing came in a little bit cheaper, so there's a reduction in interest, just $258, and the principal would go down by $1,204. On the original spreadsheet I sent you the other day, I said the sales tax would go down by $500,000. I had great news today from the state. They project that to only go down by $209,589. Granted, they are having another revenue study session, or whatever you want to call it, in August or September. So things could change. But as of now, that's what they're telling us to use for their projections. I do have one residency bonus to reduce by $600. And the only other outstanding item I have is ambulance revenue. Dean really looked into this, and we could reduce it by $60,000, but he truly felt he would know better in September. So I'm going to leave that up to you, whether you want to reduce that now, or wait until September when we have better numbers. So without the ambulance amount, we would use $373,321 of fund balance with those adjustments. And the other items were for major and local streets. It's, it's just they reduced things down about $150,000. So I just made adjustments for that through the capital improvement accounts.
Karen?
Yes?
Yeah, I'm always pretty conservative. I just want to take that $60,000 off of the fire revenue now, and then add it back on.
Okay.
That's my opinion, okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Is that a voting type thing? Should we ask everybody? Should I add it? Does anyone object?
Well, I think we can go around and ask everybody that. But let's, so while it's there, let's go around and do that, since Bill already voiced his concern and timber. So Nelson? Can you unmute? Nelson?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And Wendy?
Um, I'm sorry, but I don't know what we're good with. Are we good, when we say we're good with it, is that we're good with taking it out or leaving it in?
Taking it out, taking it out now. And then, if it doesn't change, then it'll still be there.
I say, I say.
So what I'm saying, current, if I reduce ambulance revenue by $60,000, that's what I want to know. Do you want me to reduce their revenue right now?
And so far, I think that's, everybody said yes.
Okay, I see.
Well, basically, they're projecting it to be reduced by $60,000.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's going to change it. So Karen, that's going to change it, the number 60 grand, correct?
Correct. He just thought he'd have a better handle in September, that's all. That's why I put that wordage, wording in there.
Yeah, that's good.
And, yeah, and I think we're but I think we're okay with that, because I think when Stephen speaks, we're going to talk a little bit about what we think and how this is going to go this year. So Karen, if that's where you're at with the tick list, and you have nothing else, we're going to let.
I am fine, yes. You can hand it off to Stephen, yes.
Okay.
A minute, a minute. One more question, sorry.
Okay.
Um, so does, by taking out the $60,000, does that put our dip into the fund balance at $433,000 roughly?
Correct, you are correct.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, you have a question?
I did.
Scott, you're muted.
Why is the, what, am I on? Why is the
Yes.
ambulance revenue projected to come in short? Is that, why is the ambulance revenue coming in short? Is that just a shortage of runs that we're not seeing because of COVID-19 or whatnot?
They are having less runs, for sure, yes. Currently. And so he was
That's what I thought.
estimating that that might happen in the future. We don't really know.
Okay, just wanted to verify, thank you. Is Dean here? Yeah, I see him. So Stephen? If you want to go ahead, Stephen?
Yeah, absolutely. So, thanks, everyone. I know that, I just wanted to read, you probably got the letter attachment. Can everyone hear me okay? I just got your connection.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you probably got the letter that I had sent as an attachment, just what Scott had sent out, that I just wanted to read for everyone. Just to kind of hopefully provide some sort of path forward here for us. You know, thank you all for your patience, cooperation, and hard work as we've navigated through this unprecedented global pandemic with COVID-19. This has been a great challenge for our administration, our entire community, as we deal with the completely uncharted territory from both a public health and economic standpoint. It's been especially challenging to compile, propose, and pass a budget in our usual manner with not only so much uncertainty, but without being able to meet in person to discuss these issues as well. However, I'm incredibly confident in our abilities as a group to get through this together. So, much of our upcoming fiscal year, and our current one for that matter, is still unknown. State does, now does not expect to have a full grasp of what revenue losses will look like until August, and any relief package from the federal government is still to be determined. That being said, we still have to adopt our own budget by the second, second meeting in May for the fiscal year, beginning in July, per our charter. In order for us to make informed budgetary decisions in the coming year, I'm proposing that after the passage of this budget, that we will have a standing agenda item during at least one council meeting per month for us to receive budgetary updates, revamped projections, any additional news, and suggest budget amendments when necessary. While I know this probably isn't going to provide 100% of the clarity that we need, I do think it's a step in the right direction for both transparency and sound decision-making for us all going forward. I thank you all again for your help and cooperation through this challenging time, and I look forward to the passage of this budget, working together to make continued improvements for our community. So that said, I just, you know, wanted to offer that up out of the gate here, that hopefully, you know, starting in July, once this fiscal year hits, we'll be able to have Karen give us updates, just as to any sort of big changes that we might be looking at, any sort of knowns becoming more clear, and things of that nature that I think will be helpful. But with that as well, over the last couple of weeks, Scott and Karen and Rick and I have been meeting virtually, just to talk through some of these items. And we knew that that, that sales tax revenue hit was coming. We didn't know what it'd look like. At first, the state was saying that it was probably going to be about 30%. And I think that that's what they've seen for some of these months. Unfortunately, they don't predict that to be like that for the entirety of the year. But, right, the pseudo-good news being that, as Karen mentioned, that we were initially going to put on this tick list a reduction of $518,000 in revenue. But based on the numbers that were received from the state today, we're able to do that, or I don't remember the exact one, but the $207,000 instead, which, it's still not great. I'd much rather have that number going in the opposite direction, but from where we were before, that does make me feel a little bit better. But as I said, we've been talking through some of these things and trying to accept the reality of what this is going to look like for us over, you know, even not just the next few weeks, but next few months, and entirety of the budget year, and what programs and events and things like that are going to be changed, not be held. So there were a few items that, for discussion today, that I would like to add to our tick list that will fortunately all be cost savings measures. But I think a lot of them address the realities that we face with this pandemic here. The first item that I would look to add to the tick list here would be the closure of the pool for the summer. This would save us $24,000. You know, not my favorite path to take, but we've already seen that Oakland County is closing all pools for the entirety of the year. And I frankly wouldn't be surprised if that is occurring all over Southeast Michigan, for at least public pools, that is, and one of our size and scope. As I said, this would save us $124,000 for the year, $44,000 of which would go in our current budget year, but that would be an $80,000 savings for this upcoming budget year. The next item.
Even?
Yes, Councilman La Fever.
You know, the pool, I'm not a favor of pool closure. How about the income? How much, what about the annual income takes in?
Correct, that's, that is inclusive in that number. I don't know what revenue offhand, but by closing it, we would have a net savings of $124,000 for the year.
Wow, that number shocked me. Karen, do you agree with that number?
Yes, Bill. If you were, I think we talked about this at one time, how much the pool loses every year? And I think that at that time, it was, it was 160. There's, this is, you would still have the pool open next June, so that's not nearly as high.
Oh, I see. I got it.
So I'm just going to go through the next three things, and I mean, we can dig up after, but I'm just going to add, talk about what I would like to add to the tick list. And if the council does not want them on the tick list, that is certainly no hard feeling on my end, but just throwing some ideas out here that can get that fund balance number lost. The next couple we have here would be the suspension in-person recreation programs for the summer, which would be a $15,000 savings in this budget year. The lack of renting out the Westfield Center until a tentative date of October 1st, which, I mean, this is another one that is kind of just throwing dates at a dartboard here, because we don't know when we're going to be able to have events with that large of crowds again here anytime soon. I'm pretty confident in saying that there's not going to be any big graduation parties coming up in the next month or two here, but going forward a little further down, something we need to look at. And that would bring about $30,000 in savings now. And then the last one that I have is we currently have four full-time vacancies. Can I just finish this one, and then?
You guys like to finish this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we, the last one would be, we currently have four full-time vacancies in the city. It is two at DPS, one at wastewater treatment, and one in the department. And I would add that we do, for every month that we do not fill those positions, is a savings of $20,000. So if we were to go into October 1st without filling those positions, and then fill them then, that would save us roughly $80,000. So it's again, items for consideration. Council, if you want to adopt all of them, that's fine by me. If you don't want to adopt any of them, that is also fine by me. But in conjunction with Rick, Scott, and Karen here, we wanted to come up with some ideas to throw out there to the group, just to see if anyone, you know, wanted to take those courses of action. So if there's any questions for me, or for Karen and Scott, back over to Rick here, so.
Okay. So first off, I've asked you all to raise your hands if you have questions.
Well, I'm raising my hand.
Wendy had her hand up first. I saw that before, when he was talking the first time, when Bill asked a question. So Wendy?
Yeah, there, if you click on Participants, Timber, off to the side at the bottom, it'll say Raise Hand or Lower Hand, is just what I'm clicking, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I didn't, I didn't.
If you had, yeah, I wasn't sure if you saw that. But my first question is for closure of the pool. Um, what, I thought I saw something in there about some capital improvements that the pool had needed. Are those things that we can still do this summer while it might be closed? Or is that something that you put into the savings of closing the pool?
So I will, I'd have to, Karen, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. But I mean, we would, some of these repairs were needed before opening to begin with. And I know that DPS had started working on that, and they were kind of looking for our guidance to say, hey, do we need to hurry up this, or can we pump the brakes and address it at a later time? So, I mean, it's still projects that are going to be needed regardless. So I, I guess, was that still included in this budget, or was it probably budgeted for this current fiscal year?
Mike, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Now we can.
Oh, there we go.
I'm going to let Joanne or Tim. Oh, okay, sorry. I was talking and thinking you guys could hear me, but I, whatever. So I think I will let Joanne or Tim answer what they have to do as far as maintenance and what they have done so far. I, I know Joanne's on here. I didn't see, I'm sure Tim is, I just didn't see his name. Joanne has her hand up. Do you want to call on her?
I'm here. Yeah, Joanne.
Okay, we're both here, so. Yeah, so, so there is some, some capital maintenance. Can you hear me all right? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
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 You know what? I'm sorry, my internet is, I guess. My internet is bad. I apologize. So there is some capital improvements, some maintenance that does need to happen. The, one of the pumps does need to be repaired. We have, a, we're waiting on a quote for that currently. And Tim might be able to shed more light on the status of that. There is some additional concrete work, gutter work that is, is needed. We, to be quite honest with you, that has not been budgeted. And we did not request that in this coming year's budget, because we were hoping at the time, before all of this COVID, was to ask for a budget amendment to have it done in this current budget year. But we did not bring that forward, or have not brought that forward to date. So, Tim, can you shed a little bit more light on where we're at with the pump, please?
Yes, the, the pump has been looked at by two different companies. I'm still waiting for a second bid to come in. It is something that we could not open the pool without it being done. It is something that will need to be done eventually. So we are, we're looking into that. And it's probably anywhere in the, in the price range of, well, I'd rather not say what the price range is until we receive our quotes, I'll be honest. But it is, it is in the budget, so, in the proposed budget for the end of the season.
Okay. Okay, so that was my question, if the savings was from not doing the repairs, but we would still have money if we closed the pool to work on the pool while it's closed? I guess that's what I want clarification on. From, I, I guess from.
Correct.
I heard Joanne and Tim say two different things. Joanne said it wasn't budgeted. Tim said it was.
Karen, I'm sorry.
I apologize, it was not budgeted.
The concrete work was not budgeted.
Right, so Joanne.
Go ahead, Tim, you can, you can.
The concrete work is not budgeted, but the pump was budgeted.
Yes.
Let me, let me, if I, if I may, there, the concrete work and the pump were not budgeted. The pump was put into projections for the end of this year. End of this fiscal year.
So neither one of them's in the budget for this year. Okay, so you guys are going to be coming asking for that anyways. Correct, Tim?
Correct.
Tim?
It's something, correct.
Hello, okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, do you have anything else?
Okay, and then the second part, yeah, just the same question for the Westfield Center on the capital improvements. Are we going to still be able to, is there a roof that needs to be fixed, I believe I heard? Or is there anything in the budget for capital improvements on Westfield Center?
Karen, I'd have to defer to you on that one, too, to see what was, had been holdover from the last one, or if there was anything outside of just sort of a general small allotment, a set aside for that one. I don't have in front of me, unfortunately.
Okay, am I muted?
No, you're good, I can hear you.
Cool, because I can't decide, because I have the phone thing. I'm sorry. So I do not believe there's anything in this budget just for Westfield. I don't know in Bill's repairs in his 265, if he had something in mind for that. Is there money in the capital projects fund? There's some money, not much. I wouldn't count on it.
Okay, and the savings that Westfield Center, I mean, is there an employee that is in the Westfield Center? Are they going to be reassigned to something else? What do, what do we do about the, if it, if these places are going to be closed, such as some of the things that happened at the cultural center, the pool, Westfield Center? How does that affect employees that would have worked there? I realize the part-time won't get paid, so like the lifeguards and that sort of thing, but how does that affect other part-time or full-time employees that were, would have been there, you know, hosting those events and so forth?
Sure, yeah, no, it, it would involve us not hiring the seasonal part-timers, or, you know, if there is, you know, finding some other place for them. Currently, there's, you know, is a full-timer that oversees the senior programming, and that would again be subject to this decision, whether we wanted to, you know, find an alternative route there for, to be able to keep going.
Okay, thank you, I'm listening for now.
And I see, Joanne, you have your hand up, so you must have a comment to add to what we're talking about, correct, Joanne?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, whether or not there's activity in the Westfield Center, the full-time position, we, we're looking at different ways that we can reengage with our community. So it may not be in person, but it may be virtual, or, or at a different location, outdoors, those kinds of things. So I think that there are other ways in which to reengage in, with, with our community. Not only, you know, again, we've, we've done a number of conferences, and we did a think tank with key people, looking at different ways to, as we develop our reengagement plan. So, so there are, there are options other than that facility itself, that we can reengage and have our, our staff, you know, working on that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I see that, Timber, you, do you still have a question?
Yeah, well, that, that was, that was my question. Exactly. What are we going to do with these employees? And, you know, I don't know. I, I, I think there's got to be some type of something go on here with, I mean, if we use these employees every day, what do you mean when you're going to engage in other things? This pandemic's not going to go on forever. And I mean, we're just closing and shutting, shutting down everything. Then, you know, how do you keep these people doing what, is my thing? I mean, she, we've got a senior citizen coordinator, you know, they run the cabs, they run the, you know, shuttles and different things and senior groups there, but there's nothing going on. So how long and for, what are we, what are we going to use these people for? Is my whole feeling.
Joanne, go ahead.
Thank you, Rick. So, to answer your question, Timber, is our department has been working very hard on developing a reengagement plan for the community, understanding that there are going to be different stages of reengagement, based on the demographic of, of the participants. And so we are looking at various ways of, you know, making that happen. I think the youth of the community will be one of the, one of the first areas to reengage. And our, our senior population, I think, is going to be a little more down the road. However, we are looking at ways that we can do some reengagement on a virtual basis. And depending on what the state does and what the governor does, we will be ready when we can re, you know, have, you know, activities back. Now, it may not be activities as it has been. And so we are looking at creative ways to maybe use other assets within our community, may not be the Westfield Center where there are large groups, but we want to make sure that we are reengaging and servicing all populations as best we can. I think the senior population is one of the most critical populations, because they have been extremely isolated. And so we are looking at ways to which we can reengage them and safely, so.
Okay, give me an example. Give me an example of that reengagement for seniors. Give me like an example.
So an example would be using outdoor space, where they could have still social distancing, using our parks to bring the programs outdoors, using virtual applications, such as the meeting that we're doing here today. So I think that there are a lot of different opportunities that we have, where it doesn't have to be at the Westfield Center necessarily. You know, going back to even the, a park program for seniors. Like, we used to years ago have a park program for children. We can utilize our assets outdoors to bring them together, have a coffee, clout, or whatever you want to call type of an activity for the seniors to come together. Again, keeping in mind the social distancing and keeping the activities safe. So those are just some of the ideas that we are working on. And so, so yes, I think it can be done. We are, we've done some surveying. We are continuing to develop some additional surveys just to understand what, what persons, how comfortable they are with, with different applications, with, you know, technology. I mean, some seniors are very techno-savvy. Others, it may be a bit of a challenge for them, but we are reaching out to some of our partners to assist us in that endeavor. So I think that there is great opportunity for the department to, you know, re-engage with our, with our entire community. And I think that that's so key for, for the redevelopment or just getting through this, this pandemic. We really need to make sure that, that there is stuff out there for our community to come together and, and help with the whole, you know, rebirth or whatever you want to call it of the, the community. So we're, we're, we're ready to go and we're really working hard to make that happen.
So you have things for them to do?
We are working...
Everybody that worked at the pool or the rink or the, because it sounds like it's going to go into fall, according to what you're saying, with the closure of things and, and the Westfield not being rented. So that obviously includes the rink, the pool and the Westfield with, you know, all these employees, but nothing going on. So, you know, I'm just concerned with what we're going to do with, you know, going forward.
Just to add to that, Timber, I certainly understand. But there, there have been no seasonal employees hired for the rink or for DPS.
No, not, I'm not talking about seasonal, Stephen, at all.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I'm talking about our regular employees that, you know, run these facilities every day on a full-time, you know, basis. And, you know, what they're going to be engaging in with, if this is all closed down for as long as you guys are saying. It just seems to me a little extreme that we're going to go into fall and not, not be open and doing things. Because, I mean, the governor's already, you know, releasing things a little bit now. And I'm hoping that our town gets back somewhat normal, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trust me, I, I 1,000,000% agree. I mean, I wish it was able to open two weeks from now. But I'm, I guess my thought process with this too, particularly as it comes to Westfield, is I, I don't think that we're going to be going to, going to be having big events, particularly with seniors for quite a while.
Oh, no.
Particularly, you know, being such a vulnerable age group that, that that one is, I'm off. I, I hope that, you know, not, unfortunately, I hate to say it like this, but, you know, for the rest of us, that we'll have some semblance of normalcy, you know, much, much sooner. But I think particularly with seniors, that that's going to be a very sensitive thing that we have to manage going forward. And like I said, this October 1st big group thing, this is a total toss at the dartboard. I have no information to indicate that, or otherwise, I just know it's not going to be June 1st for, you know, big graduation parties and stuff.
No. No, that's my whole point, that we're going to be very, very limited, it sounds like, to what our employees are going to do or be, you know, expected to do or whatever. So, you know, we need to look at all that, I think, on a month-to-month basis and see what's going on there.
Certain, and I, I have to admit, that's, I think, why we suggested, and we're going to have those monthly budget meetings, either the first or second meeting of every month. So I see with that, that Bill, you had your hand up. Bill, the fever?
Yes. Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Could you recap that again? How much money are we going to save by closing the pool?
$124,000 for the calendar year. So 44,000 of that goes into this current budget year for like basically the month of June's operations. And then $80,000 for the next budget year with the anticipation that we open up as normal in 2020.
Okay, Joanne, the pool passes are sold in June, aren't they, this year?
Yes, we have sold approximately $8,000 in pool memberships. The, the number that has been put out there for savings does include a refund of those dollars.
Okay, and how many do we normally sell in June?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, the majority of our revenue for the pool, I mean, it's, membership is sold prior to the opening. So we, you know, sure. But, but I think that the numbers that we, that, that we're working off of, we, we did some, we redid our projections based on what we anticipate we will be able to do. And just so you know, that we have been working towards the, with the intent to open the pool just because we need to, we need to move in that direction if, if we're able to open. Obviously, it's all too, going to depend on this, what the state does and what the health department allows us to do. But we have been on a number of aquatic seminars and calls with other, from nationwide, other organizations that manage pools. And talking about the same thing is how do you reopen the pool? And what is going to be the protocol that will have to take place? Again, ma- maintaining some type of social distancing. Now, all the CDC recommends is that the, the virus is not transferred with, through the water because it's treated, so from that standpoint. But we're looking at different ways. So if we are to open the pool, it will not be business as usual this summer. So we anticipate that our crowds will be less, that we will change how we interact with the public, what kinds of programming that we do. We may go more of a programmed facility versus an open facility, open swim type of a facility, just because we need to be able to maintain the, the numbers. And you're, that, that maybe the open swim would be, would be reduced. So, so we're still working out that. So that's why the, the anticipated revenue may be a little less than what was projected on a normal summer. But I will say that our survey results, we did ask the question is, would you be interested in using the pool this summer? And the survey results was extremely likely, or more than likely, was 62%. Less than likely, or not at all, was 21%. And there was about a 16% that was not sure yet. But, you know, overwhelmed, I mean, 62% of people, and this was a couple of weeks ago that the survey was sent out. And it was about a 300 people responded. So, and, and one of the, the biggest programs that they would like to do is swim lessons, again, trying to teach their children how to swim, that's, you know, for health and safety reasons as well. That answered your question or not?
No, it didn't. I was, I asked you how many pool passes will be sold in the month of June normally?
The actual number, Bill, I'm sorry, I don't have that number available to me. But, but the, like I mentioned, that the majority of our pool passes are, our membership is sold prior to the pool opening. And our pool is open in June normally. They, that the majority of our, of our memberships would be sold prior to June.
Just to refresh my memory, isn't that number around 100,000? Is that a good number or not a good number?
I'm going to refer to Tim to see if he can look that up, because I know he's in the office. He might be able to provide that information. Off the top of my head, Bill, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, Scott, you were the next one to question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I wasn't even done with mine.
Oh, I thought you were done. Okay, sorry, Bill.
Well, the last thing I heard was, Tim was in the office, he's going to look it up for me.
Okay, well, we've got to give him time to look it up, don't we?
Give me two minutes.
Okay. Is there any other questions you have, Bill, and we can come back to that?
My, my, I'm on the pool, okay. The pool does a couple of things, okay? Not only is it a service to the citizens, but it provides a job for a lot of young kids that are saving money for the college. Without that, 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 it hurts those kids, okay? And the swim lessons are, swim lessons are very, very important for young kids to learn how to swim. And that pays a very important part of their life. I think it's important, so before we do that, I want to make sure we explore every single avenue. And the biggest problem with the pool is that bond payment. That's the biggest way we lose by the pool every year because of the bond payment, not keeping the pool open or closed. You know, I, I still believe we take all the revenue that comes in, okay? And you, and you take expenses off that, it wouldn't be that much difference. Your trip wouldn't be over, over 100 grand, to my opinion.
So I guess my question then, Bill, is what is your opinion based on? If Karen's opinion is that it saves $124,000 by having it closed?
I, I would say past experience. We've had this discussion many times. You were in the council, we had this question probably two years ago.
No, I, I expected that number to be around $90,000 in savings from when we had that discussion, I think around last year. I don't know, Karen, if you have any more insight or anything to add to that as to how you came up with this 124,000 number or with Tim and Joanne's decision there?
Yep, Tim and Joanne provided some adjusted budgets and information. So if they want to expand on that, that's fine.
Yeah, so because of the COVID pandemic and what we anticipate that we will need to do opening the pool this year, we do not anticipate that we're going to hit our rev, our original projected revenue just because of the way that we will have to, you know, limit. Again, we're being very conservative in our number. Just, and, and that's, we don't, we don't want to over-project. So the numbers that we're, that we, we projected are conservative numbers. So I think that that's one of the big things, is that because of the type of modified programming that we anticipate we will need to do to maintain CDC guidelines and social distancing and those kinds of things. And also, you know, the, just thinking that, you know, we have over 60 or so more percent people are absolutely, they're going to come to the pool. But I think that there are still some people that are, may, may choose not to this year, which is, you know... So again, we took all of that into account when we made our projections. And again, it's really was difficult. I have to be quite honest with you, we struggled with the projections and moving forward even with a budget, because there were a lot of unknowns. But we tried to be as, you know, conservative as possible. And I think that that's why that number is a little bit higher than we, we, we even anticipated it, that it would be. But that, that's the, that's...
Joanne, do you know the total revenue of the pool last year? Do you know that number? Is that easier number for you?
So...
Last fiscal year?
Was, would that be 18, 19, Karen, right?
For the fiscal year, and, so the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019 was $118,000 in swimming pool fees. This year, we have taken in 103 so far. We will owe back 85, 45, as Joanne said.
We've taken 103,000 already?
Yeah. Last year was a...
Because that's July in August of last year.
That's correct.
You understand what I'm saying for fiscal year?
Yeah. But normally, but normally we, Tim's looked at that number up too much, it's all...
I do have that number. The amount that were sold in June of last year was 45 memberships.
Four, 45 memberships?
Yes.
Was that $4,000 or what is it?
On average, about $150 each.
Okay, so it's only around six grand. So virtually the same as last year, 118,000, be a good number, okay? So you're saying we're taking 118,000 revenue and we'll spend 140,000 more and that will spend 160,000, $260,000 on the pool for expenses?
That's the number I question, the 260.
Bill, their budget for fiscal '20 is $345,000.
For expenses for the pool?
Yes, sir. Just the organized rec is $138,000 in the last budget. I'm not talking about this year's budget, I'm talking about last year's budget that was approved. It's, it's, I mean, there's cost involved.
Oh, I know, we have a lot of lifeguards and that, but I think it was anywhere near that.
It used to be 250,000, Bill.
What's that?
The, the loss every year for the pool was always about quarter of a million dollars lost. It was, it was always a quarter of a million every summer that we'd lose at the pool. But we were always supposed to make it up through the whole recreation center with the rink and everything put together.
But majority of that was bond, was the bond, for the bond payment.
Right. Right.
How much is the bond pay on the pool?
125, about, it, it changes a little bit each year, but yes, 25.
And that's not included in that number you gave me, the 340,000?
Yes, it is.
Well, we have to make the bond payment no matter what.
Right.
Right, so it's, I'm going to cut to the chase here. So it still is technically a $250,000 loss. It still is, but 125 is the bond payment. So not opening it makes up that other 125.
Thank you, Stephen.
No problem.
So I know Nelson's got you waiting patiently, and I see that on your face. While we're on the pool, I'm going to pull the card out and I get to ask this question. So, Mr. Church, can you tell me what kind of liability we would be putting ourselves out for? Or do you have any idea what kind of liability we're running into if we open the pool and do it this summer? I mean, we don't know what we're responsible for, and like Joanne says, we have to limit, we have to do these things. What do we do to enforce all that?
And, and that's a very fair question, and, and it's one I wish I had the answers to. I don't know that the people who are establishing those standards or expectations have the answers or directives to give us yet. But we do have an inquiry into our insurance agent of, if there are any expectations or from a liability standpoint. I think a couple of things that have factored into this decision that haven't been mentioned so far, or I shouldn't say decision, but just things that have been factoring into whether to make this recommendation or not. There's been an absolute question of how many employees may not feel comfortable returning to work in a lifeguard capacity in the current status or situation. That's whether that's the employees or given the number of minors we have in those positions, if the parents are going to be comfortable. I have not heard, don't know that we would be the only pool open. I've only heard of a number of pools around us that are closed this season. There has been some discussion or concern about if we were to be the only pool that were open, is the demand potentially even going to be greater? And how do we maintain the social distancing, crowd control, or any of those types of issues? Sadly, a reality that becomes more and more common in the news is enforcing the social distancing standards. I, I hate the thought of, I don't care whether it's a high school kid, college kids, or even some of our adult staff trying to enforce social distancing or things that aren't adhered to. So there, just quite frankly, there, there are a number of uncertainties. And that's not getting into what's perhaps one of our greatest economic uncertainties. And that is what is going to be the impact when West Road Bridge is torn out and you have access essentially from one side of the pool. So tho- those are some other factors that were, that were discussed that haven't been brought out so far.
Thank you, Scott. One of the things I'll add to that too is, you know, Joanne, and I don't know if we, so I'm not a big proponent of opening the pool. I know I've discussed that with Scott now. But one of my things is, so let's say that the group decides to do something like this. Well, are we going to have somebody that's checking everybody coming in? What do we do if they don't pass? What do we do because we have residents that want to come in, but all of a sudden we're at capacity because we opened it up? And there's 20 people from another city? Or we let other people in? I mean, these are, these can be hard things to do where we're going to end up probably needing more people than normal, in my opinion, to do something like this. And like Scott said, the lifeguards are going to take a responsibility that I don't know if some of them are going to want to... the lifeguards are going to take a responsibility that I don't know if some of them are going to want to bother taking this year. I mean, let's be honest, you know, just because you passed the screening, got in, doesn't mean that you may or may not have an issue. I can tell you that, you know, at the hospital, we have nothing but issues with, we have to figure out how to staff entrances. Let alone, you know, kids and all these things. So, I mean, I'm going to call on, there's a couple of other people. And Joanne, I see your hands back up. So I'm going to let you go, but there's also Nelson and Scott that have been waiting patiently for their questions.
Yeah, I just, just really quick, Rick, with respect to your concerns, we, we've, we've talked about those concerns. And that's why I said that if we are to open the pool this year, it will not be business as usual. We are looking, in fact, we have a survey ready to go with, to survey the residents as far as what kinds of programming that they would want. What, what our anticipation is, is that what we're looking at, different options, again, is more programming related versus so limiting open swim hours and maybe doing it on a reservation type of a basis. So we anticipate who they are, we know how, how many people are allowed until you reserve your spot in the pool at specific times. Removing deck furniture so that there is not that deck furniture out there. And having, like for swim club, having specific protocol of ways to, you know, having areas in the pool, looking at different ways of doing swim lesson and that allows for that, you know, meeting those CDC guidelines. So we are looking at those options. It will not be business as usual. We're not going to just allow people just to come in. We will have to be, will have to be regulated. It will have to be, like, like I said, it could be a reservation type of a system, but that's, that's the angle that we are coming from.
Okay, and lastly, and you don't have to, I mean, it's just me saying it. One of the surveys you might want to do is start getting ahold of lifeguards and see which ones are willing to take on that responsibility. Because if we can't find lifeguards, we can't find lifeguards, we can't have a pool.
We have, we have reached out to the lifeguard staff, our supervisor, pool supervisor has, and the majority of lifeguards are, are ready to go and come back. So just, yeah.
Okay, um, I think Scott was first. He's been waiting, I think, for like 40 minutes.
Thank you.
No, Scott Cavatton, don't be smiling, Scott.
I thought you were holding out on me. No, thank you. Joanne, quick question for you. Did you say 62% of that poll was favorable out of, what, was that 300 people?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's a relatively low sample, core sample. I mean, we're only talking about under 200, you know, under 200 people. Not that they don't matter, I'm just, that's, that's a small sampling group, so, all right. As far as other communities, I heard on the news the other day that Washtenaw County has closed their pools as well. I don't know if you've heard that or not. Have you, we heard anything from Metro Parks or Brownstown Township? I know they have a splash pad or even, I think Allen Park may have a public pool as well. I'm not familiar with any other public pools in the area outside of those.
Yeah, I believe Brownstown, if, I did get an email from Brownstown and I believe that they are holding off on their, on their splash pad at this point. In fact, I can, I can look that up before, to verify that for you. But I have not heard from the Metro Parks at this point, so I don't believe that they've made a decision on their, on their pools. But Oakley County, yes, we got, we know that, and nor has Wayne County. I've not heard about the Wayne County on channel, what they're doing.
Okay, yeah, good point. All right, and next question is for Karen. Karen, based on Joanne's comments earlier that, you know, she expects a reduction based on COVID-19 protocols, you know, we expect a reduction at the pool, whether that's 50% or whatnot. What would be our revised cost? I mean, how much, based on, you know, forecasting, how much do we think the pool is going to cost us this year to operate? If we're not going to have, you know, I don't think we're going to hit $118,000 in revenues like we have in the past. What would that really, I mean, are we looking at, you know, what are we looking at, like 55,000, 57,000, something like that for, for revenues?
Joanne, do you have your revenue sheet in front of you?
Yeah, I do. I'm looking at it right now. So, so Scott, are you asking, so just to clarify, the pool budget crosses over two budgets. So it's really difficult to give you, you know, it's, so if we were to open the pool this year, our, with modified programming, this, this current fiscal year, our revenue projection is 72,000, oh, wait a second. I'm sorry, 120,000. And if we were, in next year's budget, if we're to open, we're anticipating 72,000 revenue for next year. But that also includes the revenue that we would, would pick up for the '21 season.
Right, right, understood. Yeah, understood. I'm just trying to put a, trying to put a number on it, see what, see what the impact is. So I mean, roughly, in layman's terms, we're talking about a $50,000, roughly, we're talking about $50,000 in lost revenue.
No. No, no.
So.
Well, I just heard 120 and then I heard 72.
Correct. So, yes, so if, if the, I just want to make sure that I'm answering your question correctly, Scott, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
So, 100, so last year's 120, so 192 over two years. Karen, can you help me out?
Okay, so, sorry, I, I was trying to hold off. I know I asked you to speak and I'm so sorry. So Scott, let me say this to you. So in the budget that we're talking about, I'm going to keep it easy. Joanne, if we have programs, so if we have stuff in the summer, the revenue is, she's saying would be $72,000. If we do not have programming, the revenue for the pool would be 42,000 and all of that would come next June. So we're talking about a $30,000 difference there. It is, 72 is much lower than the prior years because people aren't going to, you know, I mean, you're just not going to have the numbers. You're not going to have kids hip to hip, if that makes sense.
Right, right. I'm just trying to understand what, what the true big impact is. I mean, it's, it's a significant impact, right?
It sure is. I mean, this COVID is going to hurt us regardless.
It is. It is. And I mean, for the record, look, I'm, I'm a big fan of the pool. I just, at this point, I just don't know if it makes complete sense to open it. Bill brought up some valid points, Timber did. I mean, everybody that spoke about the pools made some very, very good points on the pool. I know it's going to impact just more than just regular swimming and it's going to be swim club and everything else. I just, I don't know if, if that's something we can swallow at this point in time. Okay, so I'm, I'm done with the pool. I do have one question. Mr. Mayor, I think you mentioned for employees that would not be, are holding off on rehiring or re-sloting those employees for, until October. Is there going to be, and we save about $20,000 a month, I think is, that, that's the estimate at this point. Is there any overtime implications or additional workload that is going to be challenging? Or any kind of issues there that we're going to have to overcome? Whether it's overtime or just maybe have to contract something out because we don't have the people or whatnot. Can you walk me through that for me?
Sure, yeah, and I'd have to defer a little bit of that to both Karen and John here, just because they were the ones that provided me with that number. So I do believe that anything else that would be incurred would have been baked into that. However, I also don't know. I mean, some of those positions we've had vacant for a little bit now, for some, for several months. I know one being, I believe it's an instrumentation electrician at the wastewater treatment plant that we have been, had to contract out unfortunately. A decent amount, one is a vacancy in police and two are in DPS. And right now with DPS working on smaller crews, that that hasn't impacted any overtime wise, but I'm not sure. I guess I, for final say, I'd have to defer a little bit to Karen here just to see if any increases went along with those positions. If we were about that $20,000 per month.
Okay, I'm hoping, I'm hoping John Lob will unmute himself. He did provide some of this information to us, so I don't want to speak out of turn. So yes, the wastewater, it was, the contractor did replace them, so that is working out well for them. As far as DPW, their overtime accounts are not going crazy, so I think we are fine. Police, not out of control, but I would hate to speak for them. If there's something I'm not thinking of, it's the only one that I would be concerned.
Okay, all right. And I guess the root of my question is, is that by, you know, foregoing and rehiring people in lieu of, you know, working overtime and, you know, going with contractors, that may be a more expensive route in, in the end. And yeah, where we're saving $20,000 here, we might be spending 30 or 40 on the backup. And I'm, I'm sure we did that analysis. I just, you know, just.
No, that's, that's a really good question and a very fair one at that, because yeah, I'm with you 100%. I'd rather not, you know, right, if, if we're increasing overtime for something, no sense and, and doing it this way. We're contracting out and having to spend on the same amount of money. Yeah, I'm not in favor of that. And like I said, this was not a proposal to eliminate those positions or to not fill them. It's just to go a couple more months without, because I mean, it's probably going to be a little bit before, you know, even the sort of job applicant pool is sifted back out and shaken back normally. So we don't know how quickly we'd even be able to.
Yeah, understood. Okay, no, thank you. I think that's all I have at this time.
And John, did you have anything to add to that? I see you're unmuted here.
Yeah, so the instrumentation electrician, that's a position that I think we would have a hard time filling anyway and it's been vacant for some time. I don't know that we, that our wages are comparable to what the market is demanding for that position. As far as the DPS positions go with the, currently the transfer station being down, you know, we've been able to reallocate that employee to kind of, you know, kind of fill the role of one of the vacancies. So essentially, there's really one true vacancy there until the transfer station opens back up. The police, they do a very good job of managing their, their time. And, you know, Director Voss and Chief Schaefer, they do, do a good job. I don't anticipate it would be crazy overtime with that vacancy at this time. But time will tell with that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perugia.
Yes, Mr. Ben and Debbie. I guess want to bring the light real quick as I, as we treat the pool, I think we've got to be concerned with the ice rink too as far as staffing model. I mean, we have issues where we're not running out the ice and are we, you know, having staff that's being overpaid to essentially not oversee the, the rink. So I think staffing should be looked at as well as far as the ice rink as, as we are looking at the pool. I just want to bring that light.
That's what I said.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, we don't unfortunately know what the, and how, how it will if, if it all goes into the fall and how that'll affect that. But I mean, for frame of reference now, for, I remember the exact cutoff date of a month now. We have not been paying at the rink to do cleaning as we were at first.
Okay, like I said, it was, you know, the Zamboni drivers, et cetera. I mean, I just, you know, I want to make sure that we're looking at every dime we can finish. So that's it.
Joanne, I see you, so you didn't put your hand up and not putting your hand up. Joanne?
I just wanted to reiterate that we are currently not, there is no ice in the arena, so we don't, we have no Zamboni drivers. Very minimal staff of, anything would be some cleaning and general maintenance that would normally be done in the summer. Is what, is what is being done at this particular moment.
All right, thanks, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Bill, Lefever.
I'm going to bring this up, this make a few people mad, but I'm bringing up anyway. I just spent a week in Florida, had a great time, talked a lot to people about the problems down there. And they couldn't understand why we didn't furlough any of our employees. Most employees would make more money being unemployment. They still have, we pay their health insurance form, okay? And we could use that money and let the federal government pay the unemployment for these people. I, I don't understand why we're having like people and paying them sit at home. I, I just, I couldn't argue the point.
You're right.
I think that question might be directed at either Stephen or Scott Church. You're muted, Stephen.
I was going to say, Scott, if you want to take that, right now we're not paying anyone that's just sitting at home, as Bill verbally put it there. So I mean, if you want to put furloughing people on the tick list, that's what we're here for.
I'm just trying to say it's better, most employees, better for them, it's way better for the city. Use some of that money to keep the pool open or do some other things with it, but just to keep paying that, we, the federal government to bail us out, I think is like the longest mistake.
Right.
So do you want to add that to the list, Bill, that we look at to who we deem non-essential?
Well, I'm talking about survival and you have to do.
Okay, I, I understand that, but do you want that on the list?
Yes, if your, if your employer furloughed any people?
Mine?
Yes.
4,302,000, gone back to work the last two weeks.
Mine has, Timber's has, I guarantee, every in the city, everybody that works here has had people furloughed at their place of business. It's stuck to the city trend. We're the only one. Wayne County, City of Detroit, they've all done that, but for some reason we've chosen not to do it. We think it's helping people, but it's not helping people.
Right.
So I go back to the question, is that?
Yeah.
Do you want to add to the tick? Thank you. So Karen, you can add that. I don't know which ones.
That was going to be Mike, if I could ask, is there a general parameter? Are we wanting, there's the proposal to furlough people who are currently working? Not the.
Well, what do you, I mean, working one day a week?
No, it is, is, is this limited to people who are working staggered schedules? Or that we're not back into full operation yet? Or are we, are we looking at furloughing people who are currently working?
No, no, not, not people working, that are, that are working all the time, not being, not coming in one day a week or two days a week, okay? And make, and whatever, if they can make more money not working and save the city a ton of money that we could use somewhere else. I don't want to hurt anybody. I don't want to hurt anybody. But everybody else gets it. For some reason, we don't get it.
Right.
I mean, do we think that Wayne County is screwing up or the hospitals or B and E vacuum or Timber Salon or the Beaumont or whatever that, they're all, they know what they're doing.
Well, Beaumont is screwing up, I'll say that.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, a lot of ways they've done. But I mean, it's, it's just, you know, there's a million people that don't have a job right now, okay, a million. But we think we can protect everybody and we can't. We just can't. And it would help your person to get more money. They would make more money and the city trend would have more money to do things. You know, I might be the only one that thinks that and that's fine, but.
No, Bill, you're right.
Well, no, Bill, I got to say, you're not the only one that thinks that. But we have a city administrator and a personnel director that we go by their advice when it comes to certain things. Now, we can have them come up with a plan if they think one is feasible. But if you've got, if you've got ideas, send them an email. If, if, if people don't want to discuss it here, send the email and then let them respond to you. And if we talk about it, it'll be at a public forum at a council meeting or however we do it. But I think some of those, and Scott, I, I don't know, I'm not a HR or labor relation person, but some of those we probably shouldn't be doing here. I mean, it turns into the hurt feelings thing. And we've talked about this before and I can tell you as sitting on the other side of the table for a while, it was always something that we kept off of. it was always something that we kept off of here or a public view, because if there's a certain person, Bill, or a certain department, we need to know that, but do you really want to do it here? If you want to, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm just, Rick, whether it be Beaumont or Henry Ford, they'll do it like that. HR guy goes through and wants, hey, you know what, we, we can take care of so and so, that person will get a pay increase. And we would put them on furlough, we pay their healthcare form, they would get a pay increase until we get them back. That's a win for everybody, okay?
Right, and so I'll tell you how we did it, they told the managers, you're losing 10 people, you pick your 10. Yours and 20 people, yours and 30 people, you pick them.
I don't want to hurt anybody's employment, okay, Rick, you know.
No, I understand that.
And that's not, at the risk of complicating things, I need, I, I understand the concept, it is not as prevalent amongst our neighboring communities. No, no doubt, we've heard the state of Michigan, Wayne County, City of Detroit and so on, a number of our communities, more than, more of our neighbors than not are doing the same thing that we have been doing. Where we start to get into some double in the details types of complications is if somebody's furloughed, do they retain seniority? It's one thing to say we continue their insurance, but employees pay for their insurance. They pay for it through pre-tax dollars. If we are not paying them, they are now paying for their, their premiums, which for family coverage, if John could confirm, $317 a month, family premium is now going to be responsible for paying that post-tax dollars. So there, there are a lot of complicating things, it's not just an easy. We're, and then also one of the challenges in communities that have done this is employees had to apply for it and then had to be approved of, are they an employee that could be afforded to be furloughed versus the, the community saying, we are putting you off. But we, we can consider and do anything the council directs. Maybe some collective bargain, or there will be collective bargaining implications on several of these, though.
Yes.
Maybe we got to call the City of Detroit or Warren Evans, ask them how he did it.
Yeah, apparently he furloughed people that fixed fences, but anyways, John, did you answer Scott's question?
No, but if I might add, you know, there, there's some benefits, you know, there's, you know, a lot of these bigger companies, you know, they have the benefit of having, you know, an abundance of employees where we don't, where if we start utilizing this, we might be targeting the wrong employees and start affecting the services that we necessarily wouldn't want to target.
They're going to get a pay increase.
Not necessarily.
Not, not.
Most of them would be.
Yeah, some of them would, but we may be targeting the wrong, or we may.
Then you won't, you got to evaluate, you won't do that person, come on, guys, you got to evaluate them, just fooling us.
It is.
So no, it, it's.
Wait, can I clarify something?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we saying that we are going to evaluate employees based on what they make? And if they'll make more unemployed, we will put them on furlough regardless of what they do? So if that's one of the people in my office that does payroll, we don't care?
That's what your internship is, not mine.
No, it's not at all.
So Karen and Bill.
I thought that's what you just said.
No.
No, not at all.
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, let me, let me get through the whole thing, I know you will. You want administration or HR, somebody to give us a list and see if they have any people that they think we could furlough, or if we aren't going to run the city the way we normally do, are there people we can furlough? Till we get a grasp on what we're going to do.
Right.
That's perfect, absolutely.
Wow, I appreciate that from you, Bill.
Nice job, Rick.
So, Bill, if I can move on, Wendy's had her hand up for a couple minutes or hour, I don't know, I lose track of watching that thing. Wendy, unmute yourself, Wendy.
Hang on, okay, there I go. Uh, so I was just looking at Stephen's budget, just to make a point, it says staffing on page, oh, I don't know what page this is. Anyway, there's a page in the beginning, staffing levels over time have decreased to 140 people this year 2020. So we've lost 60 people over the last 20 years. Just something to think about as we make a cut, if we're looking at cutting 25% of employees, that would be finding 35 people that you could furlough. I mean, the other thing you could do is ask for a voluntary furlough perhaps. But I think it, it might, because of our staffing levels are already low, and I don't know how we compare to other towns, but there was the point in the budget proposal that shows that, you know, we're maintaining good services with fewer people. So just something to think about as well. But I think, you know, if, if a department head could find somebody who is having difficulty finding things for them to do, that that would be a potential person to look at for furlough if that's something we decided. Again, I don't know what the point of the furlough would be, are you trying to open the pool? Are we just trying to save money overall? I think we'd have to perhaps earmark the purpose of that and weigh, you know, what furloughing would accomplish.
We're trying to survive.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So it's on the list. Is there anything else that anybody else want?
If I, if I can ask a question just for, just clear direction of what we're, what we're going to be researching or trying to cost out. My understanding is the additional $600 from the federal government only runs through August 1st.
That's not true.
July 25th.
She extended till January.
It's through the federal government, Bill.
Well, the $600 is the, when it was on the, the take, whatever, look at it, but I'm, you know, it's been extended.
The $600 has been extended?
That's my understanding.
All right, that's, that's news to me, I'm not saying it hasn't been, but I have not heard that that is.
If it's till August 1st, let's go ahead, so we can do, you know, this, this is May, this is May. We can sit down and disappear.
As far as a fiscal, I mean, we're, all right.
Okay. So we'll leave that in.
I think it says July 31st.
As of now, it is, yes.
Yeah, without the proposal passing Congress.
Right, it's still in there to change it, add more, give more stimulus money, but that's all, you know, they're also talking about giving us money, we'll see where that happens, who knows, maybe, maybe we'll get enough money to cover everything. So with that.
Scott?
Oh, no, Bill's done.
I have a question, Rick.
Okay, got your hand up, I see.
This is Timber talking. For Scott Church, I know we spoke the very beginning of this budget. Can the city apply for an SBA loan, for a PPP loan? And to reimburse our employees that are non-essential at this time? In other words, if we don't open the pool like Bill says, if we don't open the Westfield, if we don't do what we're going to do, these people virtually do, are not really doing their job. And that's what Bill and I, and I think we're trying to get to the point of that, is that these people aren't having to do their job because of the city. We are not doing these services or these programs. So can we apply as a city for a PPP loan through the SBA and be reimbursed for, you know, the people not getting a paycheck?
No.
Or, or, or like Bill LaFever said, and I said in the very beginning, they can make more on unemployment and save the city a ton of money, we're all trying, I started out saying this and everybody's been expounding upon it, but, I mean, the facts are the facts. I mean, our employees, if they're, i- if they're not doing their job that they've been doing for the last 10 years, five years, two months, then they're not doing their job and we don't need them right now. They would make more on unemployment. So either through the SBA or through unemployment, that's all we're trying to say, is the workers that we're not using right now, we need to, you know, take care of it, not pretend that they're working. And that question, so that statement's for Scott, so what do you think?
I, I would agree with what Bill said, that I, I'm not aware that we are eligible. I can tell you that we have been, we did create a new pay code. John Lob has been working on and tracking that, it's a COVID-19 pay code. That is something that we've, we've been compiling numbers and tracking in the event that FEMA does reimburse for those payments. I want to, just not to pick on your words, Timber, but I, I want to clear up any misperception if we're, that people are not working. People may not.
I'm not saying people aren't working, I'm not saying that.
No, but, but I, I, what I heard or was implied was that we're paying people for not working. People are not in the office all day or in their departments, and, and certainly, some people are not working their full work schedule. There is, to the best of our capabilities, which is limited technologically, but we are working, we have a number of people that are working remotely, or as Joanne was trying to explain with some of her staff, of trying to be creative and they're working in other means and just because your office isn't physically open. But we have people that are coming in and evenings and weekends, staggered staffing, but part of that also, please don't lose sight of, when, with the time these decisions were made, was trying to stagger and protect our workforce so that if somebody went down within an office, nobody gets paid, no bills get paid, and we have no ability to, to put a budget together by the entire Treasurers and Controllers Office, as, as, just as an example, all being wiped out because someone tested positive.
Well, no, and the people that are doing this and putting the budgets together and doing what they're doing are essential workers that are doing their job, whether it be at home or whatever, they're doing their job. I'm talking about people that have jobs that, we're not doing those jobs right now or for the next couple of months or whatever. That's all we're saying, is that, you know, they could make more money on unemployment, or like I said, is there some way of through FEMA or the SBA that they, the city can be reimbursed for this kind of stuff?
We are hoping but not holding our breath on the FEMA side, the SBA, I am not aware that we would qualify for anything along those lines.
Well, they were talking about, you know, municipalities getting some type of a subsidy too. I've seen it on the news and on Fox Business and everything else. So there might be through the state of Michigan, so, some, you know, municipalities that might qualify for some reimbursements. So I think we need to explore all avenues. That's all, I, I'm just, you know, I started out saying this in the beginning, but it's just gone on, so I don't know. I think our employees are our greatest asset, but they're also our greatest costs. And if we can, you know, somehow, you know, save the city a little money and then be paid to the state, it makes more sense, period. That's all, I'm done.
Okay. So does anybody have any other questions for anything in the budget? So what I'd like to say is, I know I've talked to some of you, I know I talked to you a couple of weeks ago, some of you, some of you recently. Look, we all understand this budget is, like Stephen said, nothing we've ever dealt with ever before. And I know there's some wisdom here in the age of some of the council people and the service they've given us, and some of us are new, but we know and we all admit, I believe, that we are going to revisit this throughout the year. And who knows, even next year's, when we go to make that one, maybe just as trying, who knows? But I think that I have to thank Karen and Scott and Stephen and all the department heads for doing the best they can. And all the department heads know that Dame D told in three months, guess what? This isn't working and this is what we need to do now. So I appreciate that, I want to thank them for their time with us. They spent a lot of effort and time, because I was there for a while when the chiefs would ask some of the officers for help with the budget. It's not something they take lightly, they know it's people's livelihood, they know it's the service to the residents, and we want to provide the best, which I think we do. You know, people move here for a reason, and when I ask them, well, because of the services and the community. And I think that's something we provide to them. So yes, we have some challenges ahead of us this next year, but I think all of us together, we can get through it and we'll do a fine job with it. So I'm going to go around the table and I'm going to start with me, I can live with this budget right now, knowing that we may be here again, the middle of August revising this whole thing or certain things of it, I understand that. As far as the pool goes, I'm not comfortable with liability issues of, we have no way to figure out how we're going to enforce all these things. I know it's something that people want, I know it's a big thing in Trenton, but I think as of now, we need to just hold off and we can revisit, again, we can revisit some of these things. Okay? We took our time, we did our due diligence with the festival, and I know Karen's a smart lady and there's other funds that we could go and use some money from if we have to through the year and make budget adjustments to get through this. She'll guide us in the right direction financially where we need to go. So I will tell you that I support the budget, I support the fact that we're looking at closing the pool and some of the other programs, I will say that on the outside, we're trying to decide what to do with baseball in this town. I know it's nothing of ours, but we provide fields to them. Are we going to have the money to even hire people to get the fields ready to play baseball this year? Those are all things that we don't know and we may not be able to provide. I think parents and residents understand that, just like they did with school, yeah, I can tell you right now. The teacher got in, the teacher got suspended for a day and the student ended up in detention at my house. We'll get through it, we will get through it all. So I'm going to ask for the budget, knowing that, like I said, in August, we could be sitting upstairs doing this all over again. So with that, I will let you raise your hand if you want to tell me your vote, I can pick on you individually. I, I'm not going to bother asking Stephen, because he made the budget, so there you go.
And I didn't enjoy it for one second, for the record.
No, and, and I know, I know I asked for a meeting last Friday and I'm the one that didn't show up for it. But you can thank, you can thank Henry Ford for that one.
Rick, can I ask a question, sorry to interrupt?
Sure.
Part of what I think you're asking the councils, or trying, trying to take their temperature on, involves the MERS component that we did not discuss.
Oh.
Before we took the temperatures, do we want to discuss that or see if there are any questions or concerns? Because that could potentially make a tremendous difference in what that number from, whether either it's our mileage rate or our fund balance, that component of it.
You're right, Scott, I am truly sorry, thank you for that.
Nope, nope.
So I'll get off the soapbox and, yeah, so everybody received the literature from Mr. Church. I know I had a chance to talk to one or two of you, didn't make it the other ones. So is there questions on that or are there comments on that? And I guess, Bill, I'll start with you or if you want to, Bill. LaFever, Bill LaFever, you there?
He's taking a 30-second timeout, I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine, at least he didn't take the microphone with him, so we'll move on to the next person.
Thank you.
Sure, Timber.
Yes.
Do you have questions about Scott's, the, the MERS issue or anything else?
No, I'm fine with it and I'm ready to vote on the budget, I'm a yes, and I think that our administration did a great job. I've been in your shoes, Rick, it's, it's tough, you know, pleasing everybody. We all made some great suggestions through this budget, we're all concerned about the city going forward. And I'm a yes, and I think Stephen did a great job under the conditions that, you know, with Kyle passing and stepped right in. And Stephen, I give you a lot of credit. You've done a wonderful job. And so did you, Rick, and Scott and Karen and everybody, so I'm a yes for the budget.
Rick, can I actually, sorry, I'm not using the, I should have used the hand up thing.
No, you're fine, Stephen. You're, you're the mayor.
I guess first off, thank you, Timber. I really appreciate it and that genuinely does mean a lot to me. It really does. I just wanted to kind of, as a tie together here, that, you know, to reiterate quite a bit of what Rick said of, you know, I, I know that we have tentatively planned in, okay, you know, Westfield, October 1st rough opening. If, now in the next few weeks or so that they say, oh no, we could probably move that up to August 1st, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're dead set, it can only be October 1st. Like, this is a very fluid projection, as is most of this. That's why we're gonna talk about this every, at least once every month, to keep tabs on these types of things and reassess. You know, I, I know how frustrating it's been for all of you saying that, you know, how difficult this is without having so many of the facts that we need to do this. The unfortunate part is, you know, got them in administration either, and the people that we need to get from them, get them from, like the state and federal government, don't have them either. It's really just been like bashing my head into the wall some of the days of just like, well, I need to plug some numbers in here, but-
You don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
Nobody has a crystal ball.
And it's been, yeah, so it's, I'm not sure if you can tell, graying on this side a little bit more than usual. Side of that, that like I said, this is fluid that, you know, I want to do most of the things that are included, but it's just sort of the reality of the situation. I mean, it, it sucks to have to say that we're going to be offering fewer things. No one wants- Not what this place, that's not what Trenton's about. That's not why we live here. That's not why we all this-
We're spoiled.
Exactly, and we're, because we firmly believe that we're the best place around and I, I feel that bed very, very strongly. So I guess just sort of as a, one last question, it would be for Karen, so I'll give you a heads up here in preparation. So I know that before we added my tick list items, we were looking at, I believe it was $373,000 in fund balance for this budget. So it then includes the loss of revenue projected because of COVID. What if we include the pool closure, suspension for recreation programs, closure of the Westfield, and then a holding off on those full-time vacancies for, I guess what would technically be three months of the budget here? What would that put us at fund balance-wise? And mind you, also, I know that this will be, we've already been having those discussions about voluntary furloughs and things like that, but we haven't any final conclusions, so I just want to share both Bill and everyone else here that that is something that's been talked about extensively, unfortunately, over the last couple of weeks here. But so obviously, there could be more savings in that aspect of it too. But Karen, if you happen to have an updated fund number that will be used, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Reference for everyone.
First, first, okay, so Stephen, you were right about the 373. Then we said that we would reduce the ambulance revenue by 60,000. So we're at 433. I just want to clarify that. If we close the pool, that would be, would take us to 352, 736. Then you cut out on my speak, I didn't quite hear you. What did you say about the recreation programs?
Yeah.
Still take that out, yeah?
Yeah, take that out for the summer programs, because that'll, I mean frankly, like, jewel. And then the Westfield and then the holding off on full-time vacancy, those, filling those vacancies for the first three months of the budget.
Okay. Let me throw those in here, sorry, because I just, I didn't hear everything you said and I'm, I apologize.
No, that's okay. That's why I wanted to give you the warning. I was calling you out at the beginning, so I-
That's gonna be 307, 736.
Okay.
300,000.
That's good.
Total number.
I rounded. I did, pardon me?
So the total number would be about 307,000, I mean without the-
Yep, I did 80,000 for the pool for this fiscal year, 15 for the recreation and 30 for Westfield, but that, for the October 1st date.
Karen?
Yes?
The 15 for the summer recreation, explain that to me, please.
It was just some, some reduced expenses of about $20,000 and then it was netted against a revenue of $5,000.
Do you want to talk about the summer programs, about the cultural center, those programs?
I think she's gonna have to unmute herself. Bill, give her a minute.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah, and again, our numbers that were used were extremely conservative. I will say that the survey that we did, as far as would you sign your child up, do you plan to attend a recreation program this summer? And overwhelming, I, we had 72% of those people say yes, they would. Only 22% were saying no, they're, they were going to not undergo that this year. 6% were a maybe. So potentially 75% of the people that were surveyed that filled it out so that, yes, they would, they would sign up for summer programs. So we were anticipating signing up. Again, majority of our revenue for summer programs comes in, in this current, it'd be in, in June. So, again, we, the number of the 5,000 that was conservative, just based on the amount of programming that we anticipate that we might be able to, to do. Again, this was all very fluid. So if we did a, say, potential 50% reduction on the number of programs, just, we just took a stab in the dark, to be quite honest with you, based on being conservative with what we, we might be able to, you know, to offer. But I will say, based on the think tank that we did, people are itching and, and, you know, craving to be able to get out and do things. And so I think if it were me, I, I just have to say, you know, eliminating summer programs, I, I just, I have to, I have to fight for them because I think that they're really, really important. So that's just my-
Well, I guess, as you were, my daughter-
Smallest saving, so.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying it's the smallest of the items, the smallest savings.
I'll speak on behalf of my daughter who teaches majority of those classes. And every single one she teaches makes money. Is that not true, Joanne?
Yeah, they do. They, they either, they break even or, or, or make some, make a little bit of money. You're absolutely right, Bill. And I think where, where it came down to too is, is looking at, again, just the, the number of potentially having to, we didn't, I will say that we did not decrease our organized recreation line item as much as we did the revenue side, just because we do anticipate the potential for needing additional staff, depending on the age of the child, to make sure that we can meet safety standards. We want to make sure that we have enough staff available for these people, you know, for these programs to do them safely, so that we can maintain CDC guidelines, recommendations. But we are prepared to do that, and I think that eliminating the opportunity for us to offer summer programs this year would be detrimental. I think that the majority of the comments that we received out of the survey was, was very favorable in having programming this summer. And whether it's, it's, look, looking at utilizing different assets that the city has, you know, maybe more outdoor type of programs. And so I think that those are the things that we are working toward. We're working very, very hard. Our staff is working really hard to get that done because we know how important this is for our community and for the, for the children and for the residents of our community. They are gonna be itching for it and we want to make sure that we get it right. And, and I think, again, $18,000 to make sure that, you know, people, and you gotta look too, childcare is also an issue. And, and so, you know, a lot of people rely on some of those summer programs that we offer, so. And, and again, those numbers are very conservative, so it could be that it was, it's not going to be an $18,000, you know, that it could be less than that.
So we're not gonna have summer programs. We're not gonna have them.
If Bill would like to take that off the tick list, I will also support taking that off the tick list.
Did I lose sound?
No. Bill? Yes? Didn't even answer your question.
Oh, I'm just telling you that I, you know, I got on there and I see what goes on now. My daughter's very proud. She makes money in all the classes. She works hard on it.
I know.
Doesn't get paid anywhere near enough, but the whole idea is, we can't keep cutting back. Hey, you can't go to the pool, can't do this, can't do that, you gotta be six feet away. I spent a week in Florida. That ain't gonna happen. You know, people are gonna go to the football game.
Right, so the question is-
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut to the chase here on a little bit of this. A lot of, a lot of these additions to tick lists were based on a certain councilperson, Bill's remark at a previous meeting about how no one was taken seriously. So I've come up with some options here about, hey, what do you want to do? So Bill, you're welcome, but if you don't want to do it, that's okay. I just want you to know that everyone's taking this seriously.
You guys have put a great job in, you and Rick and Karen and Scott. I've all done a great job. Rick, I think it's your best meeting you've ever done before. I think it was great. I'm happy. We're looking at those issues, okay? I didn't really seem to address it and I'm very happy with it, okay? And I'll vote for it based on the attitude I saw tonight. Of leadership here that wants to make, look into things and at least evaluate them going forward. That makes me happy. This was a great meeting, okay? So I, I'm happy with it.
So Karen?
Yes?
We put summer programs on. Where's it at? Back. I, I, I'm, I got something written down. I think I got my social security number in here someplace.
How about $322,000? And I won't give you the rest of it just to make it easy.
Okay. So let's, let's leave the summer programs in the budget, because you're right. And I, look, I agree with Joanne. I mean, I know, understand what we're trying to do here. We're trying to make this place survive, and we may have to look at some of these things. I mean, I've lived here for almost 30 years now, and yeah, I will admit, when I first came here, I'm like, I came here because I got hired here. I stay here because I like it here, and we offer some great things. But when, if things get bad again, like they did years ago, we have to figure out how to fix this. And we can't do it just by taking it out on the people that work here. If we have to change the way we do business, that's what we do. Joanne, we have a great parks and recreation program and it helps bring people to our community. And you're a big advocate for it. Trust me, I, I hear you all the time and I'm appreciative of that. But if we have to do stuff, you know that we have to do that. So we'll leave it in there now, but we may have to start pulling money from other funds to pay the day-to-day operation and bills of the city. Okay? So I don't mean to go off of that unless somebody else has anything else, so we'll leave the summer programs in there. But we really can't do any of them till we get clear direction from administration. Okay? Which either will be Scott or Stephen or the group as a council. I mean, we could make it right, Scott, if I'm not mistaken, or Stephen, where they have to bring them back to us before we start these programs? There's people staring at me.
That's a very good question that I would probably have to defer to Scott and maybe even Alan on that one too. You're talking, much of it's just guided by purse strings, but in terms of authorizing individual program, I mean, it's not something that we've done since I've been here, but I'm not sure exactly how.
Is it, the question, would administration need to sign off or approve on each summer program offering? Or that we would need to, is that what you were asking, Rick?
Right. I guess if we say, okay, we're gonna give you the money for summer programs, but just not to go off and do them, we want to see, we want to see how you're offering it and what you're doing to, to drop our liability. Again, these are questions that we don't know the answer to yet. We don't know what they're gonna require us to do. We don't know what they're gonna require us to do before somebody enters a building, before we let the kids come to the cultural center, hang out on the grass, or any of those things. Right? They may say every kid's gotta be checked, or every parent's gotta sign a waiver saying, hey, if your kid gets sick, you can't hold us liable for it, which I know you can't sign your rights away, so Al can save me that one. But, I mean, we, we are going to have to take some responsibility for this as the whole administration, correct?
Yes, that would, yes. And my thought would be, we need to get together and do a review. Have Joanne and her entire recreation team sit down. If we know that restoring them in their entirety is a $15,000 increase cost to the budget, my guess is, is if something does not make financial sense, from a liability standpoint, does not make sense. If we do not have the participation numbers, we don't have the staffing numbers, that will only decrease that amount of what the budgetary impact with. Does that make sense, Joanne?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we'll be very smart about what programming we do and we will have specific protocol in place to make sure that the programs are safe. And we will, we've even talked about doing orientation with parents via Zoom or, so that they know exactly what is going to be expected, so that we can answer their questions and so that we can make sure that they're feel, feel very comfortable in, in having their child participate in the programs. And so we're gonna be very thoughtful in how we, how we roll this out, because we want to make sure we get it right. And we want to make sure that we, we offer very sound, safe, fun and efficient programs for our residents.
We, to make sure we follow everything that we're told to follow.
Absolutely.
And the insurance, you know, and if we have programs we don't have, such as the swimming pool, we should, if we make the decision, notify our insurance company and we'll come up with another $5,000 save there somewhere. It won't be the saving if we don't get rid of the insurance, because we're not gonna have swimming, we shouldn't have insurance.
Okay. Um, so, we're in a somewhat of an agreement that we're going to leave the summer programs on the tick list for now and it will be evaluated as we go through the budget, just like everything else is. Tim, I see you got your hand up.
Yeah, so I was just kind of piggybacking on what Joanne said and Alan as well in regards to the programs and looking at what liabilities are out there. That has been something that Joanne, Hannah, myself and Nick have constantly been on, trying to find out what these states that are opening look like and how they're handling it. Very similar actions of how we can handle it at the ice mink itself. And these are things that are moving quickly and places are starting to open up. And they are moving quickly and in checking things from, you know, everything from temperatures to having waivers formed, similar to walking into City Hall. These are all things that we have notes for and we have in place. So I think we're pretty well-prepared as we're moving forward and looking at these things.
Okay, awesome. So, if we're done with that part, I was corrected and it's my fault. So Scott talked about the MERS and that needs to be something separate from the budget. And Scott, do you want to talk exactly how that needs to go or how you recommend we do that?
Yes, my understanding, and this is something I need to, to go through and follow up with our MERS rep, and then also make sure and go through it with our, our legal counsel. My understanding and talking with our controller, we believe that the council would need to adopt one of the changes of the two different scenarios that were run. One being the extension of the amortization period to a 10-year certain time period. The other being an extension of the amortization period to 15 years, but making, generally speaking, a $2.5 million flat contribution for each of an anticipated 10-year period. We would need to make, or have a motion and a resolution passed by the council adopting that before that number could then be incorporated in, as a firm number in the budget. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes, I, I needed to know that they're gonna approve that before I come up with the tax amount in the budget. Yes, so I I need to know that they're going to approve that before I come up with the tax amount and the budget numbers to put in. Which I need to do this week for next week.
Okay.
And so I guess to to split hairs between those two options, um if you have the MERS report in front of you. Uh page thirteen is the the page that basically lays out the menu or comparison of what the annual costs are. And how those compare between the what we our current funding model is versus the ten-year certain versus the fifteen years with a two-point-five million dollar level contribution. For simplicity's sake. If you look at the uh the current contributions, as you can see, they are at four million dollars this year, running up to peaking just under four-point-eight million dollars four years from now. Um, the column right next to that, uh this year's contribution could drop as low as one-point-nine million dollars. Uh effectively comparing the far-right column of the straight two-point-five million dollar contribution each year. Um to the straight ten-year amortization change. Um you effectively have four years of relief where a ten-year amortization um saves money each of the first four years. And then you pay about the same or then uh then more in the subsequent five years uh to run out. So I think it's really a matter of, are you. More concerned about budgetary relief in these next four years than you are years five through ten? If so, I think there there may makes may make some sense to go with the straight ten-year re-amortization. If you like the consistency of just plugging in roughly two-point-five million dollars each and every year, you can do with a fifteen-year amortization. But with accelerated payments at two-point-five million per year. I want to remind you, under any of these scenarios, if we ever come into additional funding or we wish to make additional contributions. There's nothing that prohibits us from making additional contributions under any of these scenarios. Do want to also point out, though, as it was mentioned within this, this is our one swing at the pinata, so to speak. Um, this is a one-time offering that they allow you to re-amortize. Um we're a closed plan that is only on a four-year amortization anyway, so um it wouldn't be a matter of stretching that out uh too terribly long anyway. Uh but this at least affords us an opportunity to hopefully not be pinching contribution core um over the next four or five years.
I don't see any hands, so.
Well, it's a tough thing.
I I will tell you, we uh we did forward this to.
I think everybody fell asleep.
And uh Justin Colbaugh at Plant Marianne. Um but we have not, we just got this uh report on Friday. Um we have not had a chance to discuss it with our auditors. Um we've had some internal discussions. Um if there are no real strong opinions one way or the other. Um, we can even uh provide something when the agenda comes out of what the administration's recommendation is after reviewing it with the uh with our audit team. Um, uh but again, if there are strong preferences from the council one way or the other, we'd be glad to incorporate those at this point.
I'd like to wait, Scott. Till we have an opinion.
Okay.
Okay, then we can't do the budget.
No.
Or you want me to bring two separate numbers?
Then why bring it up then if we can't do it?
Well, wait.
No, we just need another budget meeting so that we would know if it's point five or the one-point-nine to incorporate into the budget document.
What's your recommendation, Karen? You're the controller.
I like the level payment. I hate the idea of doing this period because I hate to, you know, push things out farther. But we're in a, we're in. It's I, we're in a bad situation right now. There's no way we're going to be able to make those four million dollars, almost five million dollar payments.
Right, exactly.
I mean, we're backed into a corner right now. It, I mean, if they say you hold on to money for a rainy day or a different thing, it's pouring people.
Right, right.
Not literally.
No, it is literally.
Baby, it is. It probably still is raining out there. Sorry. Um, yeah, I I mean, it's only because then you know what it's going to be, and then you can plan accordingly. And then you know, oh, yes, I could make an extra payment because I know next year it's only two-point-five. Let's say we, you know, you go with the uh ten-year and you think, oh, next year it's only going to be ten-point-one, I mean, two-point-one, and then they come back and say, oh, no, it went up this much. And then you've given away an extra contribution the year before. It just makes me a little, you know.
Right, I agree.
I wish I did not have to do this, I guess.
So, yeah, and that that's going to lead to, I was going to ask Karen's opinion, but she's willing and thankfully gave it to us, which I appreciate.
Um, thank you.
So I guess if there's no comments from anybody else, we're going to tell her to go with that scenario and plug that into our budget. So next week you can vote on this.
Right, yeah.
Now, is everybody unmuted? Nelson?
I'm okay with it.
Bill LaFever?
At one time Nelson was made a motion to pay an extra million dollars this year. Do you still feel that way, Nelson?
Well, it's now when we keep, you know, finding, you know, the city being shut down longer, the state shut down longer, we're we're bleeding money that we don't have. Uh I would prefer the extra money, but you know, you got to find it from somewhere, and we don't have it. I know you support that position, Bill, but at this point, I I would say we should just stick with the two-five.
Okay, I'll support Nelson's motion. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Um, I know Timber's opinion. Correct, Timber?
Yep.
Wendy?
Yep, I think it makes sense, two-point-five.
All right, Scott, your last.
Oh, me or Church? I don't have a vote.
You get a say, Scott, trust me, but you don't get a vote.
I'm in favor.
No vote.
I'm in favor.
Cabalot.
I'm in favor of the two-point-five.
And Mayor Rezepa?
Yeah, no, I hear the sentiment of Karen that, you know, I wish this was the situation we were in, but from the same token, we still get to that hundred percent funding level at the same date. And uh, I mean, unless else is eager to fill in about one-point-seven or one-point-eight million dollars extra uh with uh whatever, wherever that may come from at this point. Um I certainly don't see a path with that. So, yeah, I'm I'm good on that two-point-five number.
Okay, Karen, does that help you?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No, you're good. I appreciate it. And Scott, thank you for your help with that. I.
Yes.
This is a learning curve for all of us this year, trust me.
Yeah.
Yes, I appreciate your support uh and willingness to listen on that one.
So with that done, now let's go back to the budget. Is there any other questions for the budget? And I know we always do a straw poll, even though we doesn't hold water till next Tuesday. But you heard my opinion on the budget. You heard my soapbox of why I think we need to do it and everything else. And I'm pretty sure Stephen put his thumbs up, so he was good with that. So then, I don't remember if I asked anybody else, so I'll go to Councilman Peruggi.
Yes.
Councilman Cabalot.
Yes, and I'll say the caveat of this is that maybe it's because I'm the new person. It sounds like everybody's kind of in the same mindset. Um, I'm glad to hear that um we are going to take a look at this. Um because this is going to be a fluid year for us. Um, I'm glad to hear that we're going to have to sit down and take a look at this on a monthly basis, maybe even a little bit more. Um, you know, there there's a lot of unknowns in this one. And um, Rick, you you and I have had conversations. I've had some conversations with others. Um, and I just want to be clear that I think the administration's done a great job. You've done a great job, Mayor. Everybody that's put their hands on this has done a great job. It's incredibly difficult um to predict the unknown. And I think you've done a pretty admirable job, everybody, in in doing your best and and trying to do so. So. Um, you know, the future makes me a little nervous and weary, but um but, yeah, I am in favor of this. You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Uh, Councilman LaFever?
Yeah, I I think it was a great meeting tonight. A lot of good things came out. I have all the comments on where we have a great team. Karen does phenomenal job every time. Rick, you did fair. Just kidding, Rick, you did a great, you did a good job, Rick. Everything good. Steve did a phenomenal job again, too, and all the department heads and uh, we had a great team here, okay? And I think if we look through the things we talked to tonight, and we're serious about it, we can make this thing happen. It'll be a continue to be a great stage. So I'm very, very happy with it. And uh, Mayor, congratulations on getting your budget passed.
Congratulate me next Tuesday instead.
Okay, I got Bob.
Are we missing a a council vote?
Yeah.
Or?
No, we're missing two still. I haven't asked their opinion.
Oh, all right.
Is that what you're doing, doing a straw poll there on your cheat sheet?
No, I I have, I have, Timber spoke up earlier, but I don't think Wendy has been asked yet.
No, I got to get to her yet.
Yeah, okay.
So we say the best for last.
Aw, thank you.
Wendy?
Oh, is I'm last already?
Well, I think Timber supported. Didn't you, Timber, or no? Yeah, I was the first one to speak. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, um, I'm very comfortable with this budget. I, again, like everybody else said, I appreciate every look, every person's look at it, everybody's uh help, understanding it, and um considering options. And I'm glad we all uh had a good meeting and we were all able to talk openly about things that we believe in and want to fight for. And um. I like the fact that we can revisit this budget because um if there are things that we're going to say, I mean, we're pretty much almost at the same spot where we started with these closures. And I think as time changes, I'm going to be a little more optimistic than I normally am, and I'm hoping that we can start adding in some more capital improvements and things. So while people will hopefully understand and accept our budget and the changes that we have to make, I think this is the year, I mean, I said it the same way with the fireworks. I I think people are very understanding because of the year that we're in, and hopefully this will give us a chance to sit back and use it as a a year to um maybe address some things that we haven't in the past. Uh and do some um uh growth in our city where we would not have been able to do that um because of of this. So, you know, looking on the bright side, that we may have to take some cuts in some places. But that may open up other opportunities where we wouldn't have spent that money otherwise. So I'm good. And I I probably still have some questions. How do we do this next week? We take public comment? And then do we vote on the budget with the tick list as a whole? Do we, I think I asked this question before, but uh just, could you help us out a little bit more with the process on Tuesday?
Yes, I'll explain that. Um, so I incorporate these changes on the tick list into a new budget document. And then I bring bring three items before council. One is the approval of the budget, one is the approval of the tax rate, and one is the approval of the water rate.
Okay.
What is the water rate?
It actually doesn't go up until October now, I heard. I had read on one of those documents.
It says about fourteen thousand dollars and would be two cents on the water rate. Do you want me to change it? I guess I never read that far down. I'm so sorry when I read the tick list.
Yeah, um, I mean, if that's what they're still projecting, that helps me get through my summer watering a little bit.
Okay, that that'll be incorporated in there as well.
People might have to fill their own pools in their backyards.
Yes, oh, yes, they will. And they'll be happy to have them.
Yeah, I'm filling mine Thursday. Mr. Ackerman?
I can't understand why I didn't want to be the city attorney before these meetings.
You are sitting there, and it looks like you want to say something. I'm just going to give you the chance.
I was, I look at, I see all these cities where they have meetings till three in the morning, like, there's so much to disagree about, about what's going on, how it's going to happen. This is great. We got through the really important thing tonight, and well, now we'll figure out how to deal with it and hope, hope things open up. Let's hope. Hope I see you in four weeks. My my over-under is if we meet in four weeks from now, I'd be shocked. But we'll see, we'll see.
Okay, I appreciate that. So with nothing else, is there anybody else? Um, I know in the past. Um, and I'm not sure if the mayor has done it or the mayor pro town. I know we have asked for audience participation. So I guess I have to do that. And if you would raise your hand and like to comment, please do that. And also, we'll go back to the five-minute thing. I don't have a timer to hold up, but I got a timekeeper in the corner. Is there anybody? Any department heads? Not seen anybody, which is awesome. That's a good. Pardon? Uh, we asked them to raise their hands, but I guess you could. Go ahead. Okay, with that being said, I will see all of you next. Who's muted?
You were muted for a second there, Rick.
Oh, sorry.
For for confirmation as well, uh, I guess, Madam Clerk, this might be a question for you. What time was the public hearing set for uh for next Tuesday? Because we will have the public hearing before the regular meeting.
Yes, the public hearing is at six-thirty on the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Um, with no other questions. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
No vote.
Support.
Okay, you know, we got to do a roll call because we're on the computer. Madam Clerk?
Bonkcrux?
He's muted.
Let me, sorry.
Huh?
Bonkcrux?
Am I muted? You were.
You know.
Oh, okay, no, I was, yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabalot?
Yes.
LaFever?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Peruggi?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Appleby, yes.
Motion carries. We will adjourn at nine oh seven.
Thank you. See y'all Tuesday.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.
Bye. See you soon.
All right.